It's been agreed upon that they're okay with pulling the item from today's agenda. Now, the original motion that I put out was to have the work session no later than April 9th, but because of our schedule on April 9th and the ongoing negotiations, I'd like to put a motion out to move the work session on the 955 Coburg Road in Metro Plan Amendment to the 12th of April.
Second.
Moved in second?
Fourteenth, I'm sorry, yeah, 14th of April.
All right.
That's what I meant.
That's what you're seconding, right?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay, any further discussion?
Does this bump something?
What?
No, it would not bump anything, it would go on the 7:30 meeting, that's the reason for moving it from the 9th, we're City Hall until the 14th, so it'd go on your 7:30 meeting on the 14th.
Okay, all those in favor, please indicate, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and none in opposition, it passes.
I'll be here longer.
Thank you. Next up is the work session on the university area protection measures, I'm gonna let Glenn sort of walk us through them.
Thank you, Mayor. I just handed out to you an updated ordinance, what the update does is to incorporate all of the amendments that you made Monday night, and then there are two places, and I'll tell you where those are in just a second, that reflect the last motion to amend that George Brown made dealing with the acknowledgement provision, and those are highlighted, so you'll see in the title of the ordinance, highlighted and providing an effective date, and then if you turn to page 18 of the ordinance, you see highlighted Section 19. The motion to amend that's on the table is to delete all of the highlighted language. If you do that, then what you would be doing is making this ordinance effective in 30 days. I had sent out an email last night explaining that, after having reviewed all this with staff, we have concluded that the risk is small if you do that. The other thing I said is I thought there'd be six people here, so if you wanted to add the immediate effective day clause, you could, you only have five, so you can't do that.
Counselor Clark?
We have, no, we don't have another meeting, we have one more meeting within the, I was just trying to come up with another way in which we might have six people at the table in order to do that, but my understanding is that following through and voting in favor of George's motion to delete those sections is the quickest way to see the effect of this, is that the fact?
That's correct, that would make it effective under the normal course under the charter, which would be 30 days.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
We'll be basically back by the time that 30 days runs almost.
Yeah, that was the question.
Any other questions? Do you want to, do you have the motion in front of you?
Which?
The one that's on the table.
So, okay, well, the motion to amend is, so you have the main motion, and then your motion to amend is to delete on page 1 from the title the words "and providing an effective date," and to delete from page 18 all of Section 19. Section 19 states, "This ordinance shall take effect pursuant to Section 32 of the Eugene Charter or on the date of its acknowledgment as provided under ORS 197-625," whichever is later, and so if you vote yes on the amendment, you're deleting those sections.
So moved?
It's already moved, it's on the table.
Already on the table, okay.
Okay.
But is it acknowledged that that was his amendment? I just?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we're ready to vote?
Well said, George.
All those in favor, please indicate, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and none in opposition, it passes.
But now it's the main motion.
Now it's the main motion?
So you're now back to the main motion, and let me also point out on what would be page 19 of this, we did change the chart, or the figure, to reflect the earlier amendments that you made, so this now reflects all of the amendments that you made.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor, please indicate, 5 in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the West Eugene MX update. Try another one.
Rob Interfeld is going to introduce our guest from LTD to give the update.
Great.
So the West Eugene MX project was last before the council on September 26, 2012, when the council voted to reaffirm its support for the project, and subsequent to that, LTD has initiated the design and engineering phase of the project, the city staff have worked closely with them on that, and John Evans and Lisa Van Winkle from LTD are here today to bring us up to date on the project and to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you for being here.
We wanted to take this time, apologize, we haven't seen you much lately, but we trust we've been very busy following your directions since the last time you told us to proceed with the project, along with our board, we've been diligently at work on the refinement of the design to further reduce impacts to the extent possible while also maintaining a high-quality bus rapid transit extension for the city and for the district. Wanted to kind of quickly go over where we are in the design process, in your summary there, you can see that we are approaching the midway point in design, the final design effort, which is a very detailed elaborate design process, kind of the takeaway message that I'd like to leave today is that we are, having reached the midway point where we've got a very solid footprint on the design, we have been able to meet all the intents that the original concept design set forth and that the council and the board approved in terms of meeting the mitigation and reducing to the extent possible impacts to property owners while also maintaining travel time and able to maintain the traffic, travel time, so regular purpose, general purpose traffic is minimally, if at all, affected by the development of the project. So in looking at where the project goes, your handout might be more clear on this, but the different elements of the project include different priority for the bus system, so based on the elaborate mitigation and design, we agreed to, the bus is either traveling in a shared bus lane that we called the BAT lane, short for business access and transit lane, and it's a shared lane, and that lane is either added to the existing right-of-way or where there's existing capacity, we repurpose the lane into, from an existing general purpose lane to a shared lane, and the colors there and on your handout show where that is, and in significant portions, about 40% of the project, we travel just in mixed traffic. We start from the Eugene Station and go out towards the Commerce area where Walmart and Target are. Wanted to just kind of quickly highlight some of the, this process that has allowed us to get, quickly get from the concept design towards hopefully a beginning of a construction date in late summer with possible utility work starting in late spring. We've gone through a very intense design effort, where we're working closely with our partners at the city, I should mention that Rob Interfeld along with Kurt Jider, Scott Gillespie, and Tom Larson have all played a key role in a real partnership between the city and LTD in doing what's necessary in order to make the design decisions, help us with looking at various options, and working with ODOT to share the responsibility of the roadway in a manner that works for everybody. As part of the design solutions, Lisa and her team have been out on the street, and she'll give more detail on that, really meeting in depth with property owners, business owners, affected folks all along the corridor, they would take that back to our design team who would meet on a weekly basis, and that design team is made up of a real group of experts that are part of the consultant team, part of staff at LTD, and then city staff, and we would look at what the concerns were at each affected property, we looked at over 90 affected properties that would involve some acquisition of property, to see if we could further reduce that need for acquisition or in other ways refine the design to meet the needs of the property owner while also meeting the needs of the project. So we had an intense group, we'd meet weekly, we would go through various options, we'd come up with possible refinement ideas, we'd bounce those off city staff for further refined possibilities, looking at what other options we might want to consider, and then we'd move forward, and that would occur over a rotating basis on a weekly, and that went from late spring of last year to just after Christmas, took us to about 30% design, which is where we really solidified the footprint of the project. Here's just a quick example, I won't go in detail here, of where we are, you know, some of the highlights in terms of numbers, we started off with about 120 parcels, we're looking at acquiring a portion of, we got that down to about 90, it may turn out to be less than that, those are primarily strip acquisitions along the sidewalk. We thought we might have two full acquisitions of properties, we were able to completely eliminate the possibility of having to acquire two businesses, we already had a very, for a, you know, a project that's about a little over nine miles, we had very little actual acquisition of property, we were able to get that even lower, and when you consider that we moved the terminus site to a larger site, that's a good number to keep, to be able to keep to, we were able to not, it looks like we're not going to have to increase the number of driveway impacts, which is actually very low for a lengthy project along streets with many, many driveways, it's a real challenge to not affect driveways. We had the kind of direction, overall direction to preserve on-street parking wherever possible, we thought we might impact up to 60, we got that down to 15 spaces that ultimately would be removed. Off-street parking is another story, the ongoing effort was always to reduce the effect on off-street parking wherever possible, so we're, you know, try not to take a space from somebody's parking lot wherever possible. In looking at the need to ref, to bring the city sidewalks up to standards that the city's interested in doing, having wider sidewalks, wider landscape strips, and then applying that in the final design effort where we have very good survey information, we actually had to increase that in a couple places, the main location was at Marketplace West near Seneca on West 11th, where we, it looks like we'd affect about 45 spaces we didn't anticipate affecting. The other major off-street parking effect is the Walmart overflow lot, which we've talked to Walmart about, and they're pissed at us using that because they have it chained off now and they don't use it, and it's a, it's a safety enforcement issue that they would just as soon not have to deal with. So although we're accounting for 50 spaces there, those are not spaces that are generally used. We also have lower impact on wetlands, we had very low to begin with, and we have extremely low now. This is just to show you what we're talking about, when we redesigned that terminus location, we had been up here, this is Commerce, this is Target on the north, and Walmart to the south, this is Commerce Street, we had a terminus location here originally with some need for a transfer or regular service here that would have required the removal of off-street parking, we were looking at the need for a bus lane here, which would have done the Through the design process, we really came up with a win for everybody, it's a win for the riders because we're able to move the stations to a public, there was enough public right-of-way to move the stations here and here, and locate essentially just a turnaround spot for the MX vehicles here with a driver break room, and that allows us to easily connect with the existing regular bus service here and here rather than forcing people to walk this way. Property owners were not only concerned with loss of on-street parking, but also people walking across their parking lot and so forth, and the acquisition here would have been more difficult, would have affected not only environmental issues, but the property owner wasn't that keen on us purchasing that, whereas over here, the local manager of Walmart is, seems to be very interested in us purchasing a portion of this excess area of their parking This is a quick example of a design solution where we, based on the concept design, there's existing city-owned right-of-way that business owners essentially use for their own parking purposes, so when you look at it from an aerial map, it doesn't look like it affects them, of course, on the ground it does because they use that blacktop as part of their driveway and they're, they actually have it striped even though it's a city-owned right-of-way. So in looking at those very real concerns, this is Bagels Sphere, has their operations at Bitterlau site there, we were able to do a lot of work with the city, city parks, city public works in moving the bridge widening, this is the West 11th where it crosses the Amazon, we were widening the bridge on both sides, we took the widening and moved it to the south side, so we were able to maintain all the access that these folks are, that are, they're enjoying now and have no effect on them. This is a benefit that people will start learning more about, I think, was always part of the project, but the intent here at Buck Street and Seneca, this is Wal, Fred Meyer's up here to the north, this is essentially a very industrial street, it's used for essentially a parking lot for some of these, for these, there's a restaurant here and some car-oriented businesses, it's city-owned right-of-way, the project creates a bike pedestrian connection here at Buck, at the end of Buck Street, we had opened up Buck Street, the design team and working with City Direction created a what's now a rather unfriendly, unsafe street that has, you know, chain link fence and barbed wire and safety and security issues to be a well-lit, safe, inviting place for people to cross the Amazon on bikes and on foot and enter into a well-lit, well-landscaped area. It also works with the property owners who are able to enjoy the same number of parking spaces they had previously. This was an example of where we avoided a full acquisition of an existing business, this business had limited substandard parking existing, we were going to need to acquire about three to four feet just to get enough width between the State Services Building and their parking lot in order to add a lane here so that we would not impede the regular traffic flow at West 11th and Garfield, Garfield's right about here. Working closely with Tom Larson, we were able to narrow down a couple of the lanes from a standard little bit over 12 feet wide to about 11, we were able to do a couple other things, moving traffic islands and so forth, and then change the angle of their parking, and they end up losing a couple spaces, but they do not lose their ability to continue to park, and so that was a real win for everybody. Just quickly, this is Gray's Garden Center here, which is in business or will be in business soon, they were very concerned with ODOT's interest in closing the right turn, that currently you could, you can turn right in front of the off-ramp, ODOT wanted to, you know, not have that continue, through our traffic analysis and working with them directly and showing them the interests in the business, the business owner's interests, the traffic modeling results, they were able to accept maintaining a right turn there, so we did a lot of work to keep this, the access not only for this business, but also for the neighbors that live back here, really like to use this, this right turn onto Madison, so fortunately we were able to keep that, that wasn't in the original concept design. That's a quick overview, if there's time later, I wanted to, or interest, we have about a five-minute traffic simulation video, which goes a long way to show how the existing traffic works with MX once it's built, so there's concern that, you know, if you're, if you're narrowing the lanes or if you're acquiring a lane to use for MX that used to be for traffic, how is that really going to work? And this video is the result of a very detailed traffic modeling, which we were able to prove there is no net loss in travel time to general purpose traffic with MX. So if you want to get?
You're all set for that, right?
I am.
I think we'd like to see it.
Would you like to see it now?
Up to you guys, yeah, that'd be good enough.
Okay, why don't I let Lisa run through the overview of the outreach and then we'll get right to that.
Okay, all right.
Good afternoon, can you hear me well enough? Okay, thanks for this opportunity. So what I'd like to overview briefly for you is the work that we've been doing for public outreach and the plans that we have for business support associated with the project. So first, just a brief touch on the goals, of course, you want to provide people with ways to get accurate information in a timely way, in advance, most of us don't like surprises and neither will those along the line, so keeping them well-informed of the plans is a key goal. We also wanted to build our business support activities based on what we felt those businesses would most prefer, and so in our door-to-door work, we've asked their preferences in a general way, and we're building our program based on that. We also want to understand individual business needs that will help prepare for construction. Some businesses have only one access, some have multiple, each business has some form of delivery schedule, some businesses may be more sensitive to vibration, dust, those kinds of things, so understanding from each individual business their needs helps us to then provide that information to the contractors, so whatever activities that can be done to mitigate those impacts can be built into their construction plan. We also, of course, want our construction plan to support traffic flow as much as possible because not only do we need to do that for the community at large, but it's a big piece of what causes businesses or potential customers to stay away from an area, and that's the key aspect of revenue for businesses during construction. And so our goal then is to do a lot in advance, but also we need to be responsive, there could be things that change after we get started, certainly businesses come and go, so being responsive is a key goal. And there are some elements of the project that public input can still be brought to bear, and so I'll touch a little bit on how we've been working on that. So since July, we've made over 750 individual contacts along the route, that's the work of myself, city staff, our engineering team, as well as Kajito, who we've retained to help us particularly with the door-to-door work and the focus group work. For those parcels where there will be some acquisition impact or a change in right-of-way, so it's within the public right-of-way, but it's a change to the footprint they've been used to using, we've been meeting with all of those property owners one by one individually as part of the design solutions effort, and we've now gotten back to almost every one of them with the results of that work, showing them the project footprint and explaining to them how we have been able to take care of their concerns or why we were not, and exactly why. And my job in that team, I feel, has been to push the design as hard as possible in favor of the businesses until you reach the point at which the project says, you know, we just can't budge on that. So that's been my role, and I think the team has done a very good job, they've been very thorough and they, they haven't kicked me off the team. We're now also going back to the tenants on those properties so that now that the property owner understands a 30% design, we're also ensuring that the business tenants understand Meanwhile, there are many more properties and businesses along the line where there is no permanent change to the footprint they've been accustomed to using, and so here's where Kajito has come into play, going door-to-door to meet with all of them, also touching base with those on-site where there were impacts, but knowing that they were also getting the additional touch point with LTD staff directly. But in this case, going door-to-door, making sure people understand what the current design is, how it has stayed the same from the concept design or any changes. They've also made contact with managers of the apartment buildings, there's quite a number of apartment buildings along the route, as we get closer to construction, we'll be making contact through those managers to individual tenants. Of course, also outreach to the broader community, we want people to understand the project is still coming, that our goal is to keep them informed as much as possible, help answer questions they have, and so we've done mailings to all the addresses, business and residential, within a half mile of the corridor, that mailing was letting people know that we had entered the engineering phase. We have an e-news with nearly 1,200 subscribers, those go out approximately every six weeks, we have another one coming up soon, so there's probably between 5,000 and 6,000 additions of that that's already gone out, I mean, numbers of those. We have a project blog for those that are a little bit more technically interested, that's available through our website, and we've had 2,000 views of that, it's a device that wouldn't reach as many people, but it is yet another way for people to feel more in the know. We've had events and displays at over 20 community events since last summer, and of course, we have our project website with probably more detail than most people really care to know. Now I want to touch on business support, so we've made a commitment that we want to take even more action than we have previously to try to demonstrate support for the businesses, and one of the most important things that we can do is how we manage construction, to minimize the duration of activity in front of a business and to keep things moving along in a tidy manner. So one of the important things is to help people understand in advance what the sequence of construction will be and its timing, and we will have staff, primarily through Kajito, going door-to-door to all those businesses and touching with property owners and letting them know when we expect that construction will come their way. For example, tentatively, it appears that we'll have construction beginning on the west end of West 7th Avenue at Garfield, moving eastward, starting hopefully as early as July, August this year, then we'll flip-flop to 6th Avenue and perhaps head from east to west, there may be some overlap between work on those two roads and when we move our way to 11th Avenue, and Garfield will probably be fit in there somewhere. Again, that's a very tentative look at this point, but that's the kind of information, once we feel more confident in that timing, we'll be working to get that word out, and then we'll be going door-to-door, starting with the sections that will be up first, to help them understand what the timing is and what they can expect. In that door-to-door, we'll be double-checking what we understand their business needs are, some of that information we already gathered in the door-to-door we've already done, but coming back to them just before construction is the way we can make sure that information is the most comprehensive and current. Signage will be a very important component to this, particularly if there is any use of alternate access, and heavy messaging that businesses are open during construction, they really would like to have people come and shop, please don't stay away just because there's orange construction candlesticks along the road. Where allowed by the city, we are very interested in doing nighttime construction, of course, ODOT prefers this. Of course, ODOT prefers this on Sixth and Seventh Avenues where they have jurisdiction, and where it would not be in conflict with residential or motel use. Being able to work at night is very beneficial for businesses, most activities of which are during the day, but it also helps because traffic is less, and so, there's less delay for traffic, less need for traffic flaggers. So, there are many benefits to nighttime construction. We're looking at roughly 7:00 PM to 5:00 PM, so it's a little bit extended work shift, again, to try to move things along as quickly as possible. This area enjoys a wonderful tool in keepusmoving.info. I hope you're all familiar with that website, and if you're not, check it out. It's a great way to provide that very up-to-the-minute, timely information, particularly on traffic impacts. And so, a goal we have is to help people know the resources there, and to sign up for automatic alerts, so that you can get, the moment it's posted that there's going to be a lane restriction, you'd receive an email telling you that. So, for motorists that travel on these roadways, we're hoping that that tool will help them feel like they're getting the information right up to the moment. Of course, we'll have a 24-hour hotline, so that people can get a real, live person to address concerns that might have emerged. Other forms of support that we feel will be helpful to businesses, in part to show them that we care, we're providing attention, but also actual support. So, LTD is going to provide free passes for those businesses directly on the line for their employees during the entire construction phase, not just when construction is immediately in front of them, but during the entire construction timeframe. And whether they use those passes to simply head to the football games, that's great, and if they find that transit works for more of their trips, it may cause them to then be more interested in using MX once the line opens. We also want to market that businesses are open. While there may be short travel delays, there is access to businesses always available. And so, we want to promote the corridor as a whole, as well as individual businesses, to the extent they're interested. And in other support, we have formed a partnership with the LCC Small Business Development Center. They, of course, are experts in helping businesses, particularly small businesses. They have a whole series of topics that they can provide. We're planning to offer two workshops coming up this spring term for West Eugene businesses at no cost to them. That would allow them to focus on marketing and social media. We can either keep those same topics going, or change out to other topics. Again, it's an opportunity that businesses can take advantage of if they feel it will help them thrive during this period. In terms of public input, there are some areas where additional input is helping us refine our designs. We have focused on accessibility for those who have mobility challenges, also taking a look at the landscaping along the line. There will be quite a number of trees removed, and as many or more trees planted, along with other vegetation, and elements of station art. The slide's a little dark here, but we pulled together stakeholders that are actively involved in the urban forest to help them understand-- oops, sorry, hit the button too soon. To help them understand the thoughtful design that we have going into the whole landscaping piece of it, how we're looking at the health of existing trees, and working in complete partnership with the City of Eugene in helping to determine what the planting requirements are going to be important for long-term survival of the new trees, what tree species should be used. And we're hoping to be able to give property owners the opportunity to weigh in on the types of trees they would prefer to see in their area. We've worked with those involved in accessibility to understand--
wow, that popped ahead even without--
Okay. It wants to get faster. Our existing platforms work very well, but of course, there can always be things to improve. So, we pulled together some of the folks with accessibility issues to help us look if any design changes would be helpful for the new 25 platforms we'll be building. We also pulled together a variety of folks, including some of the business owners along the line, to look at pedestrian bicycle access. For example, the Buck Street crossing that John alluded to earlier. Here are some images that show more aspects of our public outreach. This, I believe, was at the Land County Public Health, Dia de Salud, St. Vincent de Paul, Acorn Park, their summer night out event, the Whittaker Neighborhood Block Party, which is an annual favorite.
And we've got the video next. So, we've loaded the video onto the PowerPoint, so if I can get someone to click on the highlighted portion of this. Just to briefly cue this up, it's called a VISIM. It's a very state-of-the-art micro-simulation model. It takes into account real results that were taken from the field, you know, the actual cars, the types of vehicles, the types, the number of pedestrians at which crossings, and projects that into 2017 to really predict what the project would do. This shows the results of the modeling, where after 10 model runs, there was no real discernible difference between the travel times going out and coming back if you were to drive a regular vehicle with the project built, and with it not built, you wouldn't notice a difference in the time it takes you to get to one end to the other. So, if you can click the blue VISIM there, hopefully, the video will start, and if you can enlarge it once it starts. There's no sound. I'll try to narrate briefly. This is just a five-minute version. This is a preview of what will be on our website. This is a little darker than what you would see on a computer, but there's the MX vehicle in front of the Eugene Station. That would be the first stop. You can see a timer in the upper-left-hand corner that gives you, you know, where we are along the route in terms of time. We're running at about twice normal speed. Here we are going up Charnelton, and you can see we're running in regular mixed traffic. We preserve the on-street parking. And again, this is a quick video with the different vignettes. The actual running time's about 20 minutes, and this is shortened to about five minutes. So, we'll pop in and out of different areas. But you're able to see what the existing traffic is, and how long-- for example, the MX has to wait at stations, at lights, and how it reacts with the traffic at intersections. The white indicates-- the white lanes are the bat lanes, the shared bus lanes. The red bars and green bars indicate what the traffic signal's doing. Here we are at Garfield on Eleventh. This was an area of concern. Yeah, here's the vehicle coming towards you. The project creates a new slip lane here for regular traffic to get, to make that right turn. There's a lot of volume that comes this way. We're able to, we moved the station to here, and the bus is able to turn after the regular traffic turns, and then stop at this station without delaying traffic. And here we are on Eleventh, where there's concern about where we're stopping just in mixed traffic. You know, how does the MX work? There's a lot of concern about that now. Right now, our normal buses stop in mixed traffic. This would allow for shorter dwell times, but we only stop in mixed traffic where there's existing capacity. And this was a test of that, and it showed that it works during-- this is during the busiest times of the day, approximately 4:30 to 5:30. So, that was it. Fred Myers. Here's typical rush hour traffic on Eleventh near Bailey Hill. Right, thank you. So, you can see, we've got backup, but the vehicle's able to work with it. This is the, some of the pedestrian crossings. We're creating two of these near the pedestrian bridges, so opposite the bridges. The video should show how these are pedestrian-activated red lights. So, persons here, they press it, it actually stops traffic. It doesn't just flash the light, and that's something that city traffic really preferred to have done. So, that's able to provide safe pedestrian crossings and access to MX. Here at Bertelson, you can see the bus is essentially getting a jump at the light, but traffic continues to flow as it normally would. This actually shows, you know, the real effects of what real drivers do. It programs in random actual type of movements, so there's a vehicle that's not, you know, from out of town, he's not sure what to do, he's following MX. So, that kind of thing will actually happen, and it doesn't cause havoc. So, here we're traveling in the new bat lanes along West Eleventh. And again, this is just, this is to show what the traffic impacts are. It doesn't, you know, we're not sophisticated or rich enough to create a full animated model with all the design improvements. It's essentially the, just the traffic improvements. Here we are at the new Terminus, where we can see that MX is operating in conjunction with this pedestrian-activated signal. MX actually operates it too. This was a tricky design solution, worked out with the city. In order to get the, essentially get the MX to turn around, we were able to use this portion of the Walmart parking lot. We're able to stop cars at the pedestrian signal, get into the left turn lane over here that would be a bus-only turn lane, and in timing with the Beltline signal, find adequate space to make that turn for the turnaround for the vehicle. And I think that's it. That's it? So, I just wanted to give you a quick view.
Thank you. Very, really cool.
We'll have that and a full 10-minute-long video that shows more detail on our website within a couple of weeks.
Thank you for that. Thank you both for your presentation. And I'll hold on for a minute in case there's some questions for you. Anybody have any questions? I just wanted to say, I appreciate seeing the effort that's really been underway to reach out to the businesses and to not only hear from them, but accommodate them as possible in a lot of the changes that you've made to do that. It just seems, appreciate that very much. I know it's hard work, and I think it's very worthwhile, and I think your outreach and depth and breadth of the outreach is really important, too, in informing people and allaying their concerns, and at least having-- if they aren't totally there, at least they know that you've heard what their concerns, and you're trying to work with them. And I think that's really what's needed. So, thank you very, very much for that. Anybody else have anything they want? Yes?
Yeah. Great update. Thank you for bringing this back to us, and thanks for your efforts and work that you've all done with the businesses. Probably should have been done up front, but never mind that. I think this is a much-improved design. Can we get more detailed, like lot-specific-type drawings that we can look at and see the specifics that are for each particular lot? You have drawings like that you can provide?
Sure.
That'd be great. And I think the construction campaign is great, and it's crucial, I think, to minimizing the impact on the businesses, on West Eleventh in particular, during the construction period. Are you still doing rolling construction? So, you're not doing the whole segment, so you're just doing sections of it?
Right.
Finishing that off as much as possible, and then going to the next one, and next one, and next one? So, it's not the entire thing ripped up for a year? So, it's just little pieces of it?
Yes.
Right. That's correct. In working with our CMGC, our contractor, we're developing both a construction staging plan and a scheduling plan in order to, you know, we've got, you know, two real issues we're trying to deal with. One is to try to get it done quickly and efficiently. The faster it's done, the cheaper it costs everybody. But it also, we also want to do it in a way that's not, that reduces impacts to folks along the corridor. So, it actually extends the time it takes to do it if we do it in chunks. They just soon tear a, you know, block off the street for the whole length of it. So, we're asking them not to do that. They have success in our past projects in looking at sections of blocks, or, you know, a number of blocks, and then working on one side of the street, and then moving on, and having that pretty much wrapped up, and then, so that we're not occupying large sections of town for the full duration of construction.
Right. Who's the construction?
Wildish.
Wildish? Okay. And so, how much time does it add to the construction period doing this, and additional cost? I'm sure both occur.
I don't have numbers for you. I think we'll have an estimate of that once we get their guaranteed maximum price and schedule that's due in May.
Okay. The, one of the things I heard about what they did in Portland, which I thought was an interesting thing, is they did the, both the contractor and the organization up there, Metro, in this case, Wildish and LTD, tried to hold all of their construction meetings at local businesses as much as possible, and also, any update meetings in local businesses, so that they actually use the people in that area and add a little, bolster up the businesses there, as well as incentivizing and encouraging the construction workers and LTD folks to eat at those establishments or shop at those establishments during the construction period. Is that something that's on your agenda as well?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Cool. Good. And the pedestrian crossing where you did the zig and the zag, there's one of those on campus on Aggett, and that does the cut across, and then it goes horizontal, and then it cuts back across. One of the problems I've noticed with that is that the middle section's not long enough, and so, people just go "phew." And that was not what it was intended to do. That could be extended a little bit more. This case is a little bit different, but in that case, it was supposed to slow people down and make them figure out what's going on, and be pedestrian-aware, and not have them cut through. And finally, can you give us an update on the funding? What's happening with that in Congress and appropriations for this?
I could give a brief shot of it, and our general manager, Ron, might want to speak to it, but we, the fiscal, federal fiscal year 14 allocations were allocated, and of that, we had an expected $24.4 million dedicated to this project. That will be released by FTA once we submit kind of the proof of the pudding, which is the design, the cost estimates and so forth, so that they know that their money's being well-spent. They'll release that, and we'll use that for the initial construction effort. We're also in the federal fiscal year 15 for essentially the remainder of the federal portion of that allocation.
How much is that?
About $50 million. And that would, in theory, get put into the fiscal year 15 budget. And then, the local match is a combination of state lottery bonding, which, a portion of which has been released by the state for us, another portion, I believe, is yet to be released. And then, about $2.5 million, we're looking at through Connect Oregon 5 grant in partnership with the city on our bike pad bridges. So, and we understand where, or things are looking good.
Yeah, it was number one of the MPC's projects moving forward.
Also, the Oregon Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee ranked it number one out of the 36 projects that they reviewed statewide.
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 Oh, great. When was that?
That's good news.
That was Monday.
That's really good news. Good. George Pauly?
Yeah, my, one of my questions was about the funding, federal funding cycle also. But my other question is, currently, there's a lawsuit, and without going into many details about the lawsuit, can somebody give us an update on where that is and how that may or may not affect the schedule?
We're probably about halfway through the agreed schedule on the lawsuit. It's a series of submitted briefs and then counter-briefs. We're at the stage where each side has submitted briefs. The schedule has all briefs being completed by about mid-April and before the Ninth Circuit Court. At the end of April, the judge then has an undetermined time to make a ruling. Our FTA-- Our FTA and LTD, that is enjoying the suit, has a partner with FTA, has asked for dismissal. That could happen. The party who brought the suit has not asked for an injunction, so there's nothing that would make us stop doing what we're doing unless an injunction was ruled, but that hasn't been requested, so we don't anticipate the project being impeded at this point.
Thank you.
Just want to, a couple more things, is I just wanted to say, I think those bike connections are wonderful, and they're really going to, the livability of the area is going to be improved by them being there, so really appreciate that. I really appreciate that you found a way not to close down any business along the route. Thank you for that work. And the tree issue, I think I noticed in reading that, that you're working on trying to be sure that the trees that get put in aren't, don't have the kind of imposition that trees all over the city have, where they can't grow because of the way that they're, the circumstances that they were planted in, that these are, will be looked at to be able to last and grow over time in a healthier, healthier way.
Right, we're taking great care with the urban forestry crew on the city, and our landscape architects and our consultants, Berry Tree Care, going to great detail, looking at critical root zones, where they can save a tree, what tree the city would preserve, just soon be replaced as opposed to preserved, you know, and the various size and relative health of all trees are being accounted for, you know, every single tree from the sapling to the largest trees.
So yesterday, in a conversation I had online, I used proof of the pudding like you used, and I was told it's not proof of the pudding, it's proof of the pudding. And so I looked it up, and it said, actually, there is both, started out as proof of the pudding and ended up with proof of the pudding, so in fact, they are both correct. And so, and they both mean actually the same thing. The results are the, what show whether something works or not. And then somebody talked about, what is a joke about what one idiom says to the other idiom? But anyway, so...
It goes without saying.
Entertainment, entertainment.
Well, finish, aren't you going to finish that one?
I could add a couple more things with regards to the trees, just a little bit more specifics. This, this plan will ensure that there's more rooting space for trees where it currently is. And then the City of Eugene is revising their street tree list, and so the selected trees will be from that updated list.
You very much. And unless anybody else has anything else, appreciate the presentation and getting us up to date. Thank you so much. All right.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Let's see, where is it? In light of growing community concern regarding council's approval of rest stop number four near the Science Factory, I move to devote the rest of the work session to discussion of relocation of residents of Whoville. And I'll discuss it if I get a second.
Is there a second? No second.
So we're not even going to just play like there's no problem and get 50 emails a day from supporters of the Science Factory?
Wow! That ends the work session for today. Thank you all.
Nice to know where we stand on it.
Thank you, government. Go away.